meeting, to order. As you can see, we have kind of a skeleton crew here today because of the specialness of this meeting and the quickness. So as we get started, I'd like to make a couple of notes to kind of tee up and show us where we are right now for this meeting. There are seven members of the Board who will be on the phone, including Chairman Powell. So I'll be chairing today's meeting in Chairman Powell's absence. President Gable is also on the phone. Unfortunately, Regent Myron will not be able to join us. She is still traveling and unable to attend today's meeting in any phone conversation. So before we begin with the purpose of the meeting, I'd just like to make a quick roll, since there are so many on the phone, just to make sure that they are there at this time before we begin our agenda. So for those on the phone, I'm going to make a quick poll, just indicate if you're with us or not. Chairman Powell?
Here.
Regent Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Regent Beeson?
Here.
Regent Davenport?
Present.
Regent McMillan?
Present.
Regent Simonson?
Here.
Regent Rocha?
Here.
And President Gable? President Gable? I don't hear her, but you will, will we be able to tell if she comes in? Oh, did I just hear a click? President Gable, is that you that just clicked in? Not yet. Okay. So we'll go back and make sure, because President Gable was going to do a little introduction. If she's not here right at that time, Mr. Coyle will just jump to you when it comes to introduction of the issue before us. We have, at this special meeting, a single item of business before us today, and that's an action on a resolution that includes two parts. The first part being a new employment agreement for our head football coach, P.J. Fleck, and the second part, an authorization to use the Board's urgent approval process to approve employment agreements with Gopher football offensive and defensive coordinators within the terms of the resolution and because of Board policy. We're going to get the motion on the table, and then we'll turn to President Gable if she is with us, and to Director Coyle. So could I get a motion to bring forward?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. So the resolution has been moved and seconded. To begin our discussion, we will, the Chair will recognize and turn to President Gable if she is with us. President Gable?
Vice Chair Swigum?
Yes. Is this Regent McMillan?
It is Regent McMillan. I was just wondering if you could let us know who's there in person from our colleagues. Maybe you did that, I might have missed it.
No, you did not miss it. We have four Regents here that are present today. We have Regent Herr, Regent Kenyana, Regent Sue, and myself chairing the meeting. Regent McMillan?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
So without, President Gable, did you come into the phone conversation?
Mr. Chair, she's calling in now.
She's calling in now? Well, wait a second, because I'd like to have her tee it up, if that's okay. Members, we'll just wait just a couple of seconds for Joan to phone in. She can tee it up for you, Director Coyle, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
President Gable?
Yes.
Oh, good. Welcome.
Sorry.
You're not a problem. You're two hours behind us out there, aren't you?
I am, and, you know, sometimes phones do funny things. But here we are, and apologies for the delay.
Not a problem. We were waiting for you and hoping that you would, you would phone in. So President Gable, we have teed up the special meeting for today. The purpose and the reason, we have taken a poll of the members both here and on the phone, and we were going to turn to you first, recognize you first if you would want to, to kind of tee up the item of conversation for today's special meeting. President Gable?
Thank you, Chair Swigum. I'm very honored to be able to call in with apologies that I can't be there in person. Very glad to be able to participate as we consider employment agreements for our Gopher football coaching staff. I want to start by saying that our university is such a wonderful place, as I've had the pleasure of learning over these first four and a half months for so many reasons, not the least of which, it's an incredibly exciting time to be a Gopher football fan. I'm really thrilled at the performance of our student athletes, Coach Fleck's work, and everyone who has invested in the academic, competitive, and community successes of Golden Gopher football. I think it's fair to say that Coach Fleck's record speaks for itself in terms of success on the field, but also in the classroom and in the community. So we're very happy to think about the future with a coach and a program like this as a key part of the incredible front porch role that athletics plays for the rest of the university. We are a world-class institution, or as Coach Fleck would say, we are elite, and we need to act that way and ultimately compensate that way. It isn't cheap to do it this way, but it is how we fulfill our mission of being accessible, being reachable, and in this case, with high-integrity, high-quality academic, excuse me, athletic competition that everyone can enjoy. So whether it's top academic opportunities that create the best prepared new talent, new businesses, new cures, or new discoveries, or whether it's a winning record, we're very glad to be in a position to discuss this with you today. So now I'll turn it over to Athletic Director Mark Coyle, who I'd like to thank for his leadership and everything his entire team does to serve as the front porch for the University of Minnesota Twins.
Thank you, President Gable. Thank you very, very much. Director Coyle, and if you would, before you begin, you have a team with you. If you would introduce them and then go forward with your, walking us through the details of the item before us.
Okay. Good morning, Vice Chair Swigum and fellow Regents. And this morning I have with me on purpose three very important people in our athletics department. We have Julie Manning, who is our Executive Associate Athletics Director and Senior Women's Administrator. We have Rhonda McFarland, who is our Deputy Athletics Director and CFO. And to my left, to your right, we have John Cunningham, who is our Deputy Director of Athletics and oversees our external units of our department. And the reason why I wanted all four of us up here was, three years ago, the four of us, along with our former President, President Kaler, interviewed P.J. Fleck when we were out searching for a new head football coach. And I can tell you, we were very intentional when we made this hire. We felt it was important that we found somebody that had an infectious personality and someone who could connect people, and there's no doubt P.J. has done those things. In addition, when we met with him, he laid out a very clear plan of what he would do academically, athletically, and socially with our football program and our football students. And if you look at what he's done over that process, academically, we have our highest grade point average we've ever had with our football program. Athletically, obviously, we're currently ranked number eight in the country in the college football playoff rankings. We're number seven in the coaches poll and the AP poll. We are nine and oh for the first time since 1904. We are six and oh in the Big Ten for the first time since 1961. And in our last 11 conference games, we are nine and two, which is best in the Western Division, and trails only Ohio State, who is eleven and oh in the Eastern Division. Socially, our football programs and Coach Fleck and his wife Heather have been incredibly active with the University of Minnesota Masonic Children's Hospital. We have hosted diaper drives, turkey drives, back-to-school supply drives, and our student athletes have spent numerous hours volunteering in the community and helping other organizations. So Coach Fleck has hit on each one of those benchmarks that he laid out for us. In addition, if you look at the national exposure our institution has received over the past several months, obviously, our game this past Saturday was one of the highest-ranked games on ABC in the past three years. Gopher football and Gopher athletics in the University of Minnesota has been talked about on the Today Show, ABC World News Tonight. It's been, you know, talked about nationally, all over the country, and it's brought great, great exposure. So those are what we feel is why Coach Fleck and his staff are deserving of this, of this new contract. In addition, we would like to talk to you about our offensive coordinator, Kurt Schrocka, and our defensive coordinator, Joe Rossi. Those are two key members of our staff. P.J. relies on them heavily. They've been phenomenal coaches for our student athletes and our program. And offensively, Coach Schrocka this year is our offensive coordinator, and he's been with P.J. his entire career that P.J. has been head coach. We have scored 28 points in each game, which is the first time that's happened in school history. We have rushed for 20 touchdowns, and we have passed for 20 touchdowns, which shows you how balanced our offense is. And in the Big Ten, we have outscored opponents 237 to 98. So obviously, we've had phenomenal offensive success. On the defensive side of the ball, since Joe Rossi was named our defensive coordinator, we are eleven and one as a team. We've allowed 10 or less offensive points in six of the 12 games that he's been our defensive coordinator. And in the Big Ten, we are eight and one with him as our defensive coordinator, and we are holding opponents to 16.3 points. Prior to his appointment as the defensive coordinator, we were two and seven in our previous nine Big Ten games, and we allowed almost 38 points. So we've had dramatic improvement there. And there's no doubt that keeping these two individuals along with Coach Fleck and the rest of our staff is important as we continue to build our program. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Swigum, for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you, Director Coyle. Do you want any of your team members here to make any comments, or just here for questions, or for your physical support?
Physical support, Vice Chair Swigum, and the brains of the operation. So they can help me with any questions you all may have for us.
Let me add the brains and the looks, Director Coyle. So with the presentation by Director Coyle, by the way, you mentioned that Gopher football has been talked about. It's been talked about in my church and in my VFW, too, Director Coyle.
Yes, sir.
The Chair is going to take the prerogative of having the gavel, and so I will make the first comment. Then I will turn to persons on the phone, Regents on the phone. Since there are so many Regents on the phone, it makes it a little difficult to know if you want to speak or make a comment or have a question at all. So I'm going to start with our Regents on the phone, and then go to the three Regents in, that are present here for their comments or questions, to make sure that if anybody doesn't get missed. I don't want to miss anybody on the phone. A 3.2, I believe it is, GPA of our student athletes on the football team. I believe Mr. Fleck requested the student athletes sit in the front two rows of class, wearing a collared shirt. I'm just speaking to some values, not, not, not to a nine and oh record or 11-0 of the last 11 games. That's important, Director Coyle, but these are values that are lasting and very, very important. If you notice on the football field, the student athletes hand the ball to the official. Now, I don't know if they practice that or not, but it looks like they do, because there's, they take the ball and respectfully hand it to the official. You mentioned visiting the children's hospital, very, very important. I believe 1,100 hours, 1,100 hours of documented community service work, reaching out and buying pizza for the band, including the marching band in a, in a closed practice at the, at the facility. These are all values and culture that we want to bring to the University of Minnesota. And even more to the University of Minnesota, I'd like you to look at the screen right now. Those of you who are on the phone cannot see it, but we just put up the en masse group on the field from after the game last Saturday. These are our students at the university who are enjoying the type of atmosphere that I think they should be able to enjoy and that they have a right to. Not only students, I assume there's a few parents down there, and there's a few supporters as well.
Regents.
Oh, Regent Sue, do I see you? Are you down there?
I'm down there in the corner, yeah.
Okay. Regent Kenyana, are you there?
Guilty as charged.
Guilty? You're there, too? Regent Herr? No, and I wasn't there either. But we're trying to pick out in this picture, and for the Regents on the phone, it is an absolutely wonderful picture of what Gopher football means to our university, to the state, and to our students. It's very, very special. And then, did I mention nine and oh? The record a little separate. So let's turn to, if we could, for purposes of the phone, and I will start with the Chair, and then go down alphabetically to see if there are any Regents that have any comments. If you don't, that's fine. We plan to be out of here by 9:35. If you do have some comments to make, that is wonderful as well. Chairman Powell, I'll turn to you first for any comments or questions, if you'd have any.
Thank you, Regent Swigum, and the approach that Coach Fleck takes has been so eloquently described. I'm, I'm not going to repeat those. I, I love his values-based approach. It's a winning approach, and I'm fully, fully supportive of this contract. I think the most important thing we can do as Regents is give the coach reasons to stay, to have continuity in our, in our coaching ranks, so that we can continue to develop these teams, and this deal is a major step in that direction, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Do I take, Chairman Powell, that you will be a yes?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Regent Anderson? Regent Anderson?
I have no comment.
No comments?
I have no comment.
Regent Beeson? Do you have any comments? Regent Beeson, are you with us still? Do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to ask?
Vice Chair and Mr. Chair, I would concur with your comments and fully endorse the resolution.
Regent Davenport, do you have any comments or questions?
I'd like to echo support for the resolution and note, in addition, my appreciation for the positive culture, high standards, and expectations, which will serve the students well into the future.
Thank you, Regent Davenport. Regent McMillan, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair Swigum. It's my intention to support this, and I endorse the comments that you and my colleagues have made. I've heard from almost as many people about Coach Fleck's appearances at United Wave Drives, at corporate gatherings, at philanthropic opportunities, as I have about what he's accomplished on the football field. So I don't want to lose sight of all that he brings to us in that regard. My really key comment is that while I'm grateful to President Gable and, and Director Coyle for bringing us this opportunity, I don't want to lose the chance to also say how grateful we are to Director Coyle and President Emeritus Kaler for making the decision that Director Coyle just alluded to a few minutes ago. It's from that decision that we get to build on and have the opportunity to extend this contract today. So we're grateful for that, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent McMillan. Regent Rocha, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Vice Chair Swigum. Just a, just a comment, and I got a question for Director Coyle and his, his team. First is, you know, I have the, the benefit of the feedback of an eight-year-old boy in our household, and it has just been really something to watch. I had a chance to pass along to Coach Fleck how exciting it was for me to watch a group of Cub Scouts pretending they were Golden Gophers at a weekend camp recently. And these are things that we've been, you know, certainly waiting for, for a long time. And I also express that, from a personal standpoint, you know, those of us that were raised on Bud Grant as the model of, of the coach on the sidelines, it's been a pretty remarkable transition to, of styles. But I also expressed to him that I understood that things have changed, and, you know, a 17-year-old recruit, his style, I think, enthusiasm and his energy has, has been, you know, obviously, a lot of people had questions at first, but, you know, the state has fully embraced what Coach Fleck has brought. I also observe these things through the prism of a, of a spouse who's not a big sports fan, and she has kind of commented throughout his tenure here, first about what a remarkable personality he appears to be, and as other, as our colleagues have already stated, his commitment to, to his team, to his players, to his student athletes, to the community, to the folks in, in need in, in the medical facilities at the university. It's just been really something to watch. And so I'm, you know, very excited, the, the progress here. I would note that, from a personal perspective, this, this program is the engine that really feeds so much of what we're able to do athletically. The economics, you know, we will get questions from people in the public about the, the amount that's paid to coaches in this regard, but this is a program that, that generates enough, you know, not only to cover its own costs, but to, to feed much of what we're able to do with providing scholarships to a wide range of people in, in different programs. So, you know, there's a, there's a very sound economic basis for, for seeking the continuity and the success that Regent Powell and others have talked, spoken to already, which leads to my question to the Director. You know, when you consider where we stand in the data that you put forward, I would, I would consider that in a very short time, Coach Fleck has established himself as one of the top, if not the top, talent in, in the, in the league, but, you know, where this, where this contract is coming in is, is a little more modest than that. And, and there have also been questions in the media and the people in, in conversations about this new contract with the, you know, with the buyout, making the transition between years one and two. Could you just address that, you, that, and I know this is where you, where you come out, but I think it's worth the public conversation about, that, that, that we are demonstrating the support that we need to keep the continuity, and that, that the plan is to, is to keep Coach Fleck at the head of this program for a long time to come.
Thank you, Regent Rocha. Director Coyle?
Yeah, Vice Chair Swigum and Regent Rocha, thank you for the question. You know, first off, I would want to recognize President Gable for her support and belief in this contract. She's been incredibly supportive of what we're trying to do, and the four of us up here worked very closely with President Gable as we put together this contract, Regent Rocha. And if you recall, in Coach Fleck's first year, he went five and seven, and we became, we came before this Board and asked for a contract extension. Last year, prior to winning Wisconsin and Georgia Tech, we'd approached the Board about a contract extension. And so we clearly have demonstrated to Coach Fleck and his wife Heather that we want them here long-term at Minnesota. And thanks to leadership of President Gable this year, as we started to have continued success off the field, and then the wind started to take place, which obviously is the most visible to the public, President Gable was incredibly supportive to allow us to have these conversations with P.J., with Heather and his agents. And when you look at the buyout, obviously, people pay attention to the $10 million number, and that goes through the first year of the contract, which would be next December 31st of 2020. So we feel like that hopefully keeps P.J. in place. P.J. understands the commitment we have to him by us guaranteeing 65% of the, of the contract back to him. And then in addition, when the buyout drops to 4.5 million in year two, that is actually higher than his current buyout. And then in year three, it's higher than his current buyout. So the buyout, we feel like we were very aggressive in the buyout in terms of providing protection to the institution, and at the same time, we feel like we're being incredibly fair to Coach Fleck, Heather, in terms of us providing our guaranteed 65% of the value of the contract.
Regent Rocha, do you have a follow-up question to that?
Just to say, you know, I thank you for that, that answer, and you just, you know, reiterate, I think, the importance of the continuity and, and, you know, certain, some of the comments I'm hearing from our colleagues, I, I especially like Regent Swigum's comment about the class with which he's running the program, with Kaler's handing the ball to the officials in a respectful way, just a wonderful role model for, for the eight-year-olds of Minnesota, and I'm fully in support of this contract and appreciate the work everyone has done.
Thank you, Regent Rocha. Regent Simonson, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a real quick comment. I'm sitting here at my desk, and I'm looking at a plaque that one of my former employees gave me, and it's, it's, it's got "team" written on it, and "team" meaning "together, everyone achieves more." And I think Coach Fleck and Director Coyle are leaders in this area. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Regent Simonson. For those who are on the phone, we are now going to turn to the Regents who are present, but if there is a question or a concern or a statement that you want to make, we will return to you if we can hear your voice and get it worked out here so that we can recognize you. So with that, I'm going to turn to the members of the Regents who happen to be here, if they have any comments and/or questions.
Your question?
I do have comments.
Regent Herr?
I am maybe in the minority here, because I don't know much about sports, so I don't know, I don't know how to judge the coach on the field. So I'm more motivated to approve this contract for the things that he's instilling on our students that I think will last a lifetime: value, discipline, giving back to community, community service. So for these things, I do want to commend him and hope that he continues in a much broader and expanded way, because I think in terms of our strategic plan, and we're talking about how we give service to the community around us and building a strong presence, I appreciate him, his team, for getting out there and being good ambassadors for us. So I'm, I love what I see him and his team doing off the field and, and his commitment to student academics. So, so I am in favor of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Herr. Do either of the other two Regents, Michael? Michael, by the way, I just picked both of you out of the picture here. I can see both of you.
Well, if you look really closely at the picture, you'll see that I'm trying to stop Mike from taking the goalpost down.
Regent Sue, do you have a question or?
Actually, yeah, I do have a question. I have some comments. I want to thank Director Coyle and his team for putting this in front of us at this point in time. I think it is a very fair and reasonable contract. And I think to my colleague, Regent Herr over here, I'll just say, you can't do much better than nine and oh.
I like the oh.
We, we, we obviously hope that we're going to see more great things from our team and coaches this, yet this season. I think Coach Fleck and Heather have delivered on just about every expectation that, that was set three years ago. And I think all of the statistics and all the great things that everyone has said, I think it's, it's all true, and I want to echo all those things. I just have one question that hasn't been asked yet, which is, you know, obviously, we, we're going to be bringing in more revenue from ticket sales and all that kind of stuff, season ticket sales. Is there, I mean, I'm just assuming that you've got this covered in your budget, which is, you know, 90, 94% athletics revenue and probably about 5% or 6% in terms of an allocation that comes from the general fund. So if you could just give me some assurance that you guys have figured out how to pay for this, and this is a coach's contract. for this, and this is a coach's contract and, and the other assistant coaches, too.
Director Coyle, the, the plan for payment of the salary increase?
Vice Chair Swigum and Regent Sue, thank you for the question. In our three and a half years of being here, the president and the Board of Regents have made it crystal clear that we are to make our budget each year. And so I can assure you, when we engage President Gable in these conversations, and when the four of us met to put together this agreement, that is the backbone of this decision. So we will continue to make our budget, and we'll continue to generate the revenue we need to do to cover this contract, as well as the adjustment to the salary pool for the assistant coaches.
Thank you. Follow-up at all?
Yeah, I would just say that I think for Heather and PJ, Coach Fleck, I think it's, it's great that they are interested in staying here long-term. And I know we're out seven years already, but, you know, maybe that's not long enough. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Regent Sue. Regent Kenyana?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director Coyle. I, you know, like everyone else, there's no gainsaying the, the success, the athletic success that the coach and his staff have brought, especially this season. And, you know, as you look at the picture, it, it's great, right? And that's important. However, you know, the university's three-part mission is what I always like to think back to, research, teaching, and outreach. And we often talk about athletics as a front porch. That's the saying. That's, that's what, that's the justification often of the role that athletics plays in our, in our universities and higher education altogether. Can you speak to what this contract specifically can do and what this team's success can do to, to feed back into our teaching, our outreach, our, our research, how we can bolster our, the mission part of the university, which is really the core?
Director Coyle?
Vice Chair Swigum and Regent Kenyana, thank you for the question. You know, I, I think President Gable says it best when she talks about the athletics program is the front porch of the institution. And there is no doubt PJ has that personality where he embraces the publicity, and he has been very strategic in terms of the outreach that our team does. And I think, you know, we talk all the time inside the athletics department that ultimately we're defined by our actions. And what we've talked about today has been our actions of our football student athletes and Coach Fleck and that program. And again, when you talk about being a role model, Regent Rocha talked about how his eight-year-old son and the Cub Scouts are kind of role modeling our student athletes. And you can talk about our most visible program, where student athletes, we have 85 who are above a 3.0, a record GPA as a team. When you talk about in a week and a half or two weeks, Thanksgiving week, our football team will have another turkey drive at TCF Bank Stadium, the diaper drive, the back-to-school supply drive. So I'm hopeful, Regent Kenyana, that you see by the example in our actions of our student athletes. You know, one of my favorite stories, if you will, I remember last year, we, we hosted a bunch of donors at Athletes Village, and it was a snowy day, and we were taking donors from our nutrition center over to the Larson Football Complex, and I saw one of our student athletes escorting an elderly lady across the icy pathway. That gave me great pride, because that shows that we have the right value system, the right culture, and we're developing the right things. So again, I think we're being defined by our actions, sir, and I'm hopeful that that is how you see us contributing back to the greater institution and the mission of the institution.
Regent Kenyana?
No, thank you. That's, that's precisely, you know, what my perception was and what I was looking to, to hear. This is great energy, and we want this, and as the chairman said, our students deserve to, to have this atmosphere. So any way we can continue to harness that energy and, and drive it back to, to mission would be great. But otherwise, thank you, Director.
Okay, so it looks like we are through with questions or comments from Regents here. I just want to go back to any Regents on the phone, if there's any additional comment or question that you might have, so we do not skip you. Hearing none, I think it is time to move forward. Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the resolution related to the intercollegiate football team employment agreements on the Twin Cities campus, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So nine and oh is important, but it only increases the importance of being one and oh this week against the Hawkeyes. It's gotten to be that much more increased importance.
I think 11 and oh is the more important.
One at a time, I think, is what PJ Fleck would say. Coach Fleck says you have to be one and oh this week, right? As I've heard him, heard him say. So with that, we've concluded our business here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Represent Sue, a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
Aye.
The motion is approved, and the meeting, a special meeting of the Board of Regents is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.